It is 8:30. I will go ahead and call today's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order, looking for an approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Gross to approve.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Citizens, since we heard, is there anyone wishing to address the county board on any item not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? Have we had any online correspondence for this?
We have not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next item is the payment of the bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Minutes from the October 25th meeting were in the packet?
Move to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Gross to approve is presented.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion?
I did have one question on there.
Yep.
Under payment of bills and vouchers, there's a line with a strike through. I'm good then. Thanks.
And I did have a clarification on the committee report area. Just Commissioner Mojo reported on meetings for one same as Kevin. Was clarifying what that was. I think it's probably, I'd like to have them, what ones specifically noted.
We will do that.
Okay. Anything else? So, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Item two today, a request from Alaris Financial to repurchase a tax forfeit property in Georgetown Township. Do you like to come up to the microphone? Just make sure your microphones are green, please.
Good green.
There's a button. There you go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I was just explaining to this gentleman, everything's on my phone, so I'll do my best to repeat our memo, but.
Okay.
Alice Stebner from Alaris Financial.
Do you want the memo?
Um.
Would that be helpful?
Let me try and go off.
Okay.
Basically, we're making a request to repurchase land that we did not understand till recently was taken back from the state.
Okay.
The land that we're speaking about is in Georgetown Township, and it was an asset of the April Richards Trust. The April Richards Trust transferred from a prior trustee to Alaris back late 2018, I believe. We've paid taxes for that piece, along with the other pieces owned by the trust, for all the years under our administration, and we're not aware that this particular piece in 2019 was not paid. And any notices pertaining to this piece went to the prior trustee.
Okay.
So, when we went to, the trust is to dissolve at the end of this year. So, when we went to look at selling it, we found out that we no longer owned it. So, our request is to repurchase it.
Okay. Do you have any?
I'm looking back, I think that there was an oversight when it was switched over to Alaris, because it's 2018 is actually the year that's delinquent. Everything else going forward was paid.
Okay.
And the previous, when the certified mail was sent out, the previous trustee had resigned in 18, but he signed for that back in, was it April, May of this year? And so, then I could see why nothing was forwarded on.
Gotcha.
Mm-hmm. And we were unaware of that, that that person had resigned as trustee.
Any questions from anyone on the board about this? Any clarification that needs to happen? Steve, this seems to, reading through the resolution presented that would need to be approved, this certainly feels like it would fall within the parameters allowed.
It would, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I had moved Resolution 2022 dash 35.
Same motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve Resolution 2022 dash 35.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Glad we can work through this. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three today is a request to approve soil and conductivity testing for the Substance Use Crisis Facility project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, we do have two items before you this morning. The first item is a geotechnical evaluation. Again, majority of the cost of this project is subject to what we do on every project in ensuring that there's no major issues with the site for the building that we're going to be putting up. In addition to that, we've had some discussions at the board level about B3 and some of the potential requirements of that. So, in addition to the normal structural engineer testing, there also is a double-ring infiltrator test that was required as a part of a potential B3 project. And essentially, what that does is it looks at the rate at which water soaks through that soil. In the event that it does not, it soaks naturally, an acceptable level, we wouldn't have to do anything. In the event that it did have issues, we would have to have a different drainage plan as part of the B3 piece. So, that is the first item before you. And the second one is the conductivity test. Again, as I mentioned, we'll be finding more information on our B3 requirements next, I believe, next Monday at our next design meeting. But it looks like B3 is, or excuse me, it looks like through the B3 process, that geothermal is going to be something that we're going to be looking at as a potential, a potential portion of the project. And so, what the conductivity test is to verify the geothermal system would be, a system that would work within that soil. With that, I yield for any questions.
Questions? This board had pre-authorized. This board had pre-authorized the building committee to give approval on some of these, pre-approval on some of these that are time-sensitive, and that opportunity came quicker than we anticipated, but this is really a large step into moving forward with what the planning will need to be. So, certainly feel that this is something that in the long run will be a cost benefit to the county. Hopeful we will hear the same as well. Questions? So, we are needing approval from the board for both the soil and conductivity testing.
I'll move to approve.
Motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve. A second? A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're now in the committee reports. Commissioner Kaylee, would you like to start?
Sure. Last week on Thursday, I attended our Children's Mental Health Local Advisory Council. We had a discussion on the family and professional surveys that go out in the community and are later presented to the board in the spring during Mental Health Awareness Month. We talked about some different ways to distribute those to try to get better feedback and a broader distribution, particularly into our rural areas. We're looking at, working with some of the schools for that. And then, we did agency updates there as well. Later that day, I attended our Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Planning Meeting, working on the plan for next week's meeting, which will feature Jail Administrator Carrie Tooten on the mental health services available to inmates, as well as agency updates there. On Friday, I attended the Cass-Clay Food Commission First Fridays Meeting. There was a presentation on Forever Green Initiative in Minnesota, which is about using perennial crops in an effort to transform landscapes by keeping more of the land covered year-round with vegetation. That was a really fascinating discussion, featuring local farmers, agronomists, and folks working for the state. Then, yesterday, I stopped by the Bromke Park presentation by the city. They're looking at getting some grants to kind of revitalize that area and seeking input from the community on what would be most desired in that space. So, I attended that on behalf of the Morehead City Planning Commission, which I am a part of. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Commissioner Gross?
Tuesday, I attended the Highway Tracking Committee Meeting. At the Buckusaw One, the work has been completed on there. There is a claim, I guess, for reimbursement of some extra work that has been done for the, some telephone line going to have to be moved. Dennis Drew filed a claim to get some funds back for the extra work he had to do with that. Also, we talked about the North Broadway Bridge. There's going to be a bid in January for the removal of that bridge. They received the last North Dakota permit last week, so they should be ready to move forward on that. Talked about all the new shops at Georgetown, Yule, and Comstock. They're all being worked on, should be completed, someone will be completed this fall, some next spring. Cold storage building out of the Highway Department. As you know, that building fell, was blown over by the wind, and they've got it back up again and working on it. We have got some couple of open decisions in the Maintenance Department. They need a maintenance worker, two variable hour plow drivers, so people are looking for work. There's some job openings out there. Other than that, it was just a national conference that's going on next spring that he's possibly going to go to if they have it, if he's available, if there's a system that's been hired. Thursday morning, I attended the diversion update. Primarily, they were talking about crop insurance. Give us an update. There was quite a, pretty good attendance on that, people here looking for information on that, put questions on it. So, that was pretty much the whole extent of that diversion update. Those were my two p's.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. On November 1st, I also had the Highway Tracking Meeting, and the only thing that I might add to that is, I think Justin is planning on coming to us in December with the dates for the 2023 construction bid dates for those projects. On November 3rd, I also attended the flow easement and crop insurance presentation to landowners that was held here. I found it to be a very informative presentation. I think there were an awful lot of questions raised by producers and landowners in the impacted area, and on the most part, I think they were satisfied with the answers that they received in terms of what coverages will be available for them. And there, like anything, as you're in the planning process, there are also a couple of questions that the answers weren't, we didn't have those yet. And those, you know, those questions haven't been written down, and they will be brought forward for further clarification and maybe allowing for additional coverage for some of those issues that they had concerns with, so. But overall, I think it was very, very well-informed. It really went into the weeds more than I had ever known it would, but. And this Alex from Watts, he came, he's from.
Montana.
Montana, really, really knows his stuff regarding crop insurance and federal crop insurance, and when one would work and when ours would take over. And I think the, I think the landowners, Commissioner Mojo, you would agree that, you know, they were, that they heard some information that they were, had been waiting for for quite some time. So, it was well-done. That afternoon, Commissioner Ebinger and I and Steve did, and Brian Milton and Sheriff Emting did meet with the city regarding the issues related to an MOU for our side of the river regarding a dispatch center and how we would handle that. And by the time we were done with that meeting, we felt that was, there was possibilities for incorporating language within the JPA that would resolve the issue without even needing an MOU. So, that continues to be worked on. However, I think I heard Mr. Larson say this morning that Cass County approved the JPA yesterday, and I'm assuming it did not have that language in it.
It is subject to approval of the two attorneys working on it.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, that's good. So, and then, but I think that, you know, that's the overriding deal. That deals with Morehead's request to pay Clay County as opposed to paying Cass County. And I think if we can make that work, I think we had clarification there. That isn't to say that we, there still isn't need for an MOU document to come forward, but it should, instead of it being a 20-some-page document, maybe it can be one. So, we're, I think we're well on our way to having a satisfied agreement between our concerns at the county level and the city. And so, that, I think, Steve, you're anticipating that to come before the board next week?
That's true. Yes.
All right. Then on, let's see, yesterday, we did have a resource recovery meeting, and things are progressing well. There's a, there are a couple of issues that were brought up that are a little bit concerning to me, and one of them was the fact that there were two more significant items that were placed in the contractor contingency. And one of them was testing and survey overruns of $61,000 and ready-mix concrete delays of $16,300. So, we're talking about another $78,000 in items that construction engineers intends to take out of the construction contingency, which would bring that number down to about $25,000 remaining in that construction contingency. So, that's a little concerning. I did raise the question about, on those issues where there were these overruns or were these additional costs, if there were, if the different contractors were questioned regarding what their additional costs were, and were they indeed reasonable additions? And construction engineers' answer to that was yes. They have, and they agree with the reasoning. So, and then, the other, the other issue of significant importance is weather-related, and that is the remaining asphalt work that needs to be done. And it looks like today and tomorrow are basically the last days that the plants will be even available, weather permitting. And so, as it stands right now, there might be the opportunity to get one of the two lifts of asphalt down. And so, the question becomes, is that, is that even a reasonable thing to do? And so, I know Commissioner Mojo and I and Steve have been communicating on this issue, and we've agreed that we should probably leave that to the technical experts. And so, we've asked Justin from our Highway Department to weigh in, and then I also asked Steve to reach out to Mike Love, who has been involved with all of our work and surveying stuff in all of the asphalt and concrete issues on all of our projects. And so, they have, they have come up with a potential, if there could be one lift, this is what should be done. In other words, there's usually one lift that's two inches and another lift that's three. Usually, the two-inch lift goes down first. The suggestion that Steve talked to me about this morning was that if anything, they would prefer that the three-inch lift go on first, in the event that the other one can't get done. And then, the other important thing that we need to make sure of is, because of how fast they got it ready, is the compaction correct? And so, Steve is working with Justin and Mike and others, and we'll be making a decision today on whether or not we think that should go forward. And otherwise, I think there's also going to be complications with not having it done with the rutting of the gravel and stuff, because we still have to have the trucks going out in the spring, so. So, either way, it's not an ideal situation, but that's what we're up against in this 11th hour and 11th day of that project, so. And then, I also did go over to the Bromke Park thing yesterday and take a look at some of their different ideas and options that they have for that moving forward. I had a chance to talk with Kristi Lysowski, and she was mentioning that the city has obtained a significant grant that's going to help with the funding of that project there, which is, which is nice. They had some really interesting things and some ideas for more availability of more participation amongst all the, it'd be a good neighborhood area. And then, there's, they also talked, they talked a little bit about the plans for that other property, I think, that, which trust is it? Jenna, you can help me on.
It's the Cass-Clay Land Trust.
The Cascade Land Trust has purchased some land there that they, they have plans for in the future that could include a daycare center or childcare center amongst other things, so. So, that could all fit, blend nicely together as a package, so. And they were looking for public input. There was a lot of people there when I was there, so. And that concludes my report. Go vote today, folks.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Ebinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Thursday, I attended the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC Executive Committee. We discussed board nominations that are coming for positions open in December and listed some persons coming off of the board. Looked at some of the work that's being done with AgTech, and that includes a group from Canada that was coming through that EDC was hosting at a couple of events. Just a lot of things in the area are drawing attention from around, not just the country, but the continent. So, some good works being done there. Had a long discussion on fueling our future, looked at the allocations of funds that have come mostly from the state of North Dakota, what's gone to the EDC, to the chamber, as well as other groups, and looked at future needs in funding. The areas of work that are taking place with fueling our futures are, obviously, workforce, which is a big issue, the top issue, and also economic growth. A meeting with the Board of the Chamber, the EDC, and fueling our future is probably going to be scheduled sometime in the near future. Talked about some staffing issues for the EDC. The annual meeting of the EDC will be on the 15th at 4:30 at the Armory Event Center here in Morehead. And talked about a meeting some of the board has had with community leaders in Detroit Lakes, just looking at Lakes Country, sort of the nexus that we've got with our region here and theirs. Later that day, I attended the Legislative Committee Meeting for the Emergency Communications Board, or Boards, I should say, the ones around the state. I attended that virtually. We discussed bringing all the committees from the various ECBs together for a meeting, make sure that we aren't overlapping on some of our issues or missing something between us. We looked at the changes in State Statute 403, which is way out of date and did not get changed last session. It still basically uses the legacy systems terminology in our laws, and we need to shift that over and adjust it in New, Next Generation 911. What was going on 15 years ago is markedly changed in how emergency communications are operating now, and the law needs to reflect that. There's also some issues on governance that needs to be worked on, and there's a pretty active conversation now with some of the efforts to get telecommunications trained and certified. Some of the sheriff's departments are not comfortable with the amount of time and the expense, and frankly, there's probably going to be a little competition. Once you get your people trained and certified, they'll be more marketable, and the smaller counties are going to have difficulty maintaining their workforce. So, all that's got to be discussed and worked out. Later that day, I attended the meeting that Commissioner Campbell spoke of with the sheriff, Brian Milton County Attorney, Steve Larson, and a number of Morehead officials discussing a joint powers agreement for the dispatch center, which is, as mentioned before, up before Cass County yesterday and passed, I suppose, tentatively with the work we came to still being an option, and we'll have that JPA come before us. The MOU that was presented, we expressed a number of concerns about, and that's being addressed. I hope we'll be able to get things resolved, but I don't see it interfering with our ability to sign the JPA. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Ebinger? Last week, I attended both of the crop insurance and flow easement meetings. One was in Hickson in the evening, and the next one was in this room the next morning. They were both very, very well-attended by not only landowners and active producers, but also insurance agents, professionals in the field. And the questions that came from the weeds, I agree, were really, really good. And part of my encouragement to include producers in these discussions as we develop what the whole package looks like is because they understand it intimately, more than any of us do. And the points of clarification and thought are just so, so valuable as we move forward. There are major unknowns, particularly in the area of sugarbeets and sugar beet stock and how that plays into the component and co-ops. And the biggest unknown really is how this plan backs up to a moving target that is the Farm Bill, that really changes with national leadership. But I heard from several producers that the information they got was great. They had said, "This is what we've been wanting to hear for a long time. We got more information here than we thought we were going to get." So, while there are unknowns, I agree, the professional that came from Montana was great and was able to answer the in-the-weed questions that people wanted to hear. So, thank you, thank you to those that put those meetings on, and I'm hopeful that if anyone listening or that had attended that has further questions that arise, Eric Dodds from AE2S has made available the information to contact folks, so reach out to AE2S or any of us, and we'll make sure we connect you with those. But really great, in summary, really great meeting, you know, painful choices and decisions, but to hear from the diversion authority that the, the meeting or the agreement per the legal arrangement is that they have to compensate you up to what the projected 100% is, and that's what people have been waiting to hear. So, thank you for that.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Can I just tack on one other thing on that, too? One of, you know, this has, this has been in the process for quite some time, trying to develop this, this whole insurance process. And one of the things that probably... And one of the things that probably isn't stated much is that an awful lot of information was provided to us by NDSU, which is an agricultural college. And they happen to have a lot of knowledge in the ag industry. So a lot of the, they had a significant involvement in terms of, you know, at least what areas might be damaged and how long the damage might occur and all that type of stuff. So I just wanted to give some credit to NDSU too in that process for the work that they did on behalf of everybody. So thank you.
Thank you. I attended the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting yesterday. We did discuss a recommendation to the full board for a budget adjustment a little bit. They did hear that there will be a 7% increase on insurance, the insurance packages for employees. So we did approve that. And then also, our leader Cindy Gray, who has just served MetroCog in amazing capacity, will be retiring in the spring. She gave us six months to find a replacement. And Cindy came on during a time of unknown for MetroCog as we moved towards a MPO. That is, then she's done a lot of groundwork to get us to where we need to be for that. And also has really just transformed how active MetroCog is in all of the conversations for planning community-wide, particularly with the diversion authority. They weren't even at the table before those, before she was hired and has really been active there. And then really through the pandemic has led wonderfully. So we're sorry to see her go, but she will help us in the interim. Then yesterday, I also attended the transfer station meeting that Commissioner Campbell alluded to. I know we all need moisture, but it would be nice if 12 inches of snow would, maybe wait a week. But we'll see how that all comes. And then I do want to clarify, I have had a lot of messages from people today curious about where they need to vote. The cities have all done a really great job of communicating polling locations on their website. If you Google your address, it's all on there. But for the rural townships, a lot of people are going to, say Kurt's Township where I live today, and not able to vote because of the transition to mail-in voting. But also, all of those people that have questions on that, you can go to the Clay County Auditor's Office today. It is as safe and secure as it was to walk up to your town hall. But for anyone, I know this probably is going to be long, but I want to verbalize those townships and cities that are voting at the county auditor today. Because I've had at least six in the last hour messages of where to vote. So if you live in Alliance Township, Barnesville Township, the city of Comstock, Cromwell Township, Felton Township, the city of Georgetown, Goose Prairie Township, Hagan Township, Holly Township, Highland Grove Township, the city of Hitterdall, Holy Cross Township, Humboldt Township, Keene Township, Kurt's Township, Mullen Township, Moorhead Township, Oakport Township, Tansom Township, or Viding. You all vote at the Clay County Auditor's Office. And then too, if you would like to take it one step further, just Google Clay County, Minnesota, elections. And all the questions, everything that I just listed off is on there. There's maps and addresses to your polling locations. Sorry for any confusion for people. But it's still, you'll go in with your information, they'll look you up, get you settled. So, yes.
Got a couple of things, thank you for that. I just, just to clarify, because the area of Oakport Township, there's a lot of people who are now in the annexed area that has been annexed. They still oftentimes consider themselves Oakport Township residents just from habit. And that urbanized area, that annexed area, does have a polling place. So just to, just so that there, in case there's some confusion there amongst somebody who might be in the annexed area. They do have a polling location, I believe it's at St. Francis Church. And then if I could, Madam Chair, one other thing in regards to the highway tracking committee. And you brought up MetroCog. One thing that Justin did tell us that he had worked with MetroCog and MetroCog has agreed to do a traffic study on that road that goes out to Terracan. Even though it's outside of their jurisdiction, they're going to, they're going to provide that necessary traffic information for us to, that we can maybe use to, you know, work in the future with the state and helping, trying to get some funding for that road. So I just wanted to also say thank you to MetroCog for that.
Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated in highway tracking, which has been covered well by Commissioner Gross, Commissioner Campbell. Later that morning, I met with Anna in HR in regards to the open enrollment that ended last Friday. I, that afternoon, I met with Matt Jacobson. We had a series of discussions on reperion aid and how we can potentially work with soil and water and utilizing some of the funds that are available. Matt was also going to be going on a feedlot tour with soil and water staff. With Craig's retirement, Gabe is going to be taking over. And so they were going to be going out together. I also had some additional discussions on the eight FEMA parcels that we are potentially discussing, I guess, deeding to the city of Moorhead. That will be coming, more information before this board. Also had an update on the Buffalo River Lomar. If you recall, it's a board that started almost five years ago. And we continue to have more information asked of us. And so Matt checks in with Houston Engineers roughly every month. And so we're still waiting to get the final information there. On the second, met with Derek LaPointe on a series of issues. That afternoon, I had a phone conversation with Matt Evans. There'll be an addendum coming before this board next week, contract addendum for the resource recovery facility. And so we're looking for some clarification there. On the third, met with Colleen and Darren as we transition to our, to our, to our new staff with Colleen's retirement. We have a couple of new faces in the boardroom today. And so I'd like to introduce Jackie, I'm going to say it wrong, Fink, all right? She's our new communications coordinator. She's going to be the person that you see a majority of the time in Colleen's spot here during our board meetings. So we'd like to welcome her. And also Sarah Esog, she's going to be the face, the face that you see when you come in the government center. And also will be spending some time here when Jackie's not able to be on board. So I want to welcome, welcome them both. The, on the third, also participated in the city of, with the city of Moorhead. Commissioner Ebering and Commissioner Campbell have discussed, again, next week, we are planning to have Robert Wilson from Cass County and the RRD C contract or updated operations piece, or excuse me, yeah, operations oversight before this board. Again, just a reminder, this isn't, this won't be you asking, or we won't be asking you to approve the project. We'll just be looking for you to approve the JPA. On the fourth, just doing some checking of the Resource Recovery Center that we've had discussion, or excuse me, on the, yeah, on the transfer station in the asphalt area. On the fifth, I came in just for a while on Saturday. I want to thank our staff and the citizens that utilized the opportunity to do their voting early. We had 10:00 AM on Saturday, we had people waiting outside, lined up outside the door. And so it was a, it was a well, well-utilized time for voting. On this Monday, I met with Scott Fedig on a series of project-related issues. I also met with Brian Milton. We participated in the owners' meeting that's been covered well by Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Campbell. Just a few things of note prior, before the next time we meet, we do have three advertised meetings. Tomorrow, we'll be participating in the HSEM Senior Elected Officials Training at the Law Enforcement Center. There's an opportunity on Thursday to participate in the MBA Annual Members Banquet. And then on Monday, from 10 to noon, there's the apprentice event Carpenter Training at the Carpenter Training Institute that this board signed a letter of previously, at the previous meeting. Also would just note that with the forecast, just a reminder for our citizens, the position of this board is that the county remains open during inclimate weather. Having said that, we do have a policy which allows our employees the ability to determine whether it's safe enough for them to travel. And so we encourage our citizens to call ahead just to verify that the person is there and/or that department is open on that day. And lastly, just a note for our citizens, we are closed this Thursday, or excuse me, this Friday in observation of Veterans Day. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And also, if anyone has driven by the courthouse in the evening and is now lit up green in honor of our community veterans, thank you so much for the service that you have provided to our nation. Any other comments or questions, statements? Have a great day.